A special council meeting is called to order at 6:00 p.m. Present, Council President Chris Lashawn. Councilmember Curtis. Councilmember Alfred Chase. Treasurer Johnson. Department head Brown. Everybody just look down the line is the police chief. Mr. Bernier is here. And the fire chief of the fire department members. Is Frank Mike he was?
I haven't seen him.
Okay, so then we will announce. Next item on the agenda, additions and deletions. President Lashawn?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Alfred Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the 2025-26 budget review and discussion with a potential vote. Everybody should have a copy and we're going to put this online. Also, would you be so kind, we have to watch when we hit the water budget for Brian? Let's get us started.
I'm gonna need a library, Chris.
Yeah, I'm wondering. Thank you. Yeah, excellent. I'm wondering if we want to allow Travis to go first since he doesn't feel well. Does anybody mind if we go out of order? There we are, great. And just to recognize, the zoning administrator has arrived. Chief, Travis, can you hear us? I was, are you feeling up to going first so that we could let you be released and then you can go and rest up and get better? Would you like to do it that way?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that if you guys don't mind. I apologize for not being there in person, but I feel absolutely terrible.
No, we hope you feel better and we're really glad you're not here in person. Better to get everybody else online as opposed to the people in the car. So, okay, so we're going to let you begin as we walk through your budget. And I'm going to...
All right, perfect.
Okay.
So, for the PD budget, I had talked about it on Monday night at the initial presentation for the council. One change under the revenue side of things was the other income, and I just wanted to point this out. We'll be selling a car in July and I'm estimating about $10,000 for that, so I put a little side note on there, it's a good $10,000, you know, marked in there for revenue, so that's what I've added in. Going back through this after we met this week, as a group, again, kind of kept everything the same. The one, the one big change in my budget from last year to this year is under police patrol, just want to go down, and I mentioned this on Monday night, line 123. You'll notice the TASER and body camera. And I had spoken about Monday, the reason for that increase and the necessity for that increase. And this is really the major reason why my budget is up so high this year is for that $45,000. And that is a five-year lease, so it's going to be $45,000 every year for the next five years. And like I said, the importance of the TASERS, body cameras, and both of those items that we currently have are outdated and they're starting to break down on us and they're going to have to be replaced. Other than that, like, I don't know if there's specific questions that anybody's had since I did the presentation on Monday, I'd be more than happy to answer them. If there's any other questions you have, Madam Mayor, that you want me to hit on, just let me know, but I'm going to try to remain on the call anyways regardless, so if there's something else that pops up, I'd be more than happy to answer whatever.
Okay, so, thank you. So, just, if you could just let us know, the TASERS and the body cameras, I know that that's, that was the major issue.
Yes.
And they are how old at this point in time?
So, the body cameras were purchased in 2018, so they're six years. And they're, like, I've got two that are out of service right now, I can't get parts for them because they don't make them anymore. And same with the TASERS, we're running the X2s and they're up to X10s now. And same deal with those, we have TASERS that are out of service, so we're swarming around amongst officers when they come in and out of their patrol shifts. So, we're limping by with what we have currently.
Okay, so, does the, any council member, do you have any questions for the chief?
No.
President Lashawn?
No, thank you.
No.
I'm actually want everybody to kind of bear with me, I'm going to be a little bit flexible here, okay? So, I'm gonna, instead of waiting for motions, et cetera, on certain parts of the budget, I'm going to open up some control discussion with the public. So, on the police chief budget, is there a major question here? You could, we are going to be allowed, if we do get to the vote, to ask more questions, but because the police chief isn't feeling well, does anybody have any comments that they'd like to ask on the police chief's budget? Michelle.
You want me to get up?
No.
Just on the TASERS and body cameras, where was that in the budget prior to this? Because there's, you know, it's not filled in anywhere in the, in the prior years that are on this sheet. And did you say this was a rental agreement and why is it better sort of rent them than buy them again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. So, were you able to hear that, the two-part question? Travis?
Yes, I did. So, the reason for that is, so if you go under debt service, you'll find the lease agreement for the old TASERS, it was $3,500 a year. Yes, I know that sounds quite a bit cheaper, and it was a lot cheaper. It's going to be right there towards the bottom, you'll see, please TASER lease, line 122. So, that's where it was, it was under debt services, and like I said Monday, I have no idea why it was put under debt services, but that's where, that's where that money was from in prior years. And then what was the last part of that question, sorry?
Would it be better to buy them outright than to lease them?
Oh, yes, okay, yeah. So, like, Monday I explained as well, so, over the five-year period, like, if I was to buy these outright, the cameras and the TASERS, it's about $260,000. So, we're small agencies, like Newport PD, all the other small agencies in the country, it's easier to get those $45,000 a year, plus the benefits of if a camera breaks, I send it back, they send me a new one. They send us training cartridges, like, these are up and ready to deploy and all we have to do is use them, if something breaks down, we send them back, they send us a new one. So, there's a little cost saving on that end. If that answers the question.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm going to, Travis, go get some rest, take whatever you need and get, and, you know, if you can hang on, you may get fine, if not, I'll text you if it's an urgent question, but otherwise, get some sleep. And thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it, and again, I apologize for not being there in person, but I'm going to try to hang on as long as I care.
No, no apologies. Thank you very much. Youself are, Travis?
I'll give myself a check here, you should go.
Okay, great, okay. Okay, now we can go through who you'd like to start with next.
You want to just go in order?
Yeah, let's just go back in order at this point, I just wanted to give him that opportunity, so...
Do you want to start with general?
Sure. Councilmember?
From the general revenue page?
Yes.
I don't have anything to say about this, but it's, it's the page I tinkered with the least. It felt like it was fixed and already established and not really, there wasn't much there to play with. So, I haven't done anything really here.
Any questions?
Hands go.
No, but, I mean, council first, sorry.
Not at this.
No, it seems like most of the increases were things we have to do, like salaries and health insurance, reimbursements, refunds, that kind of stuff.
Treasurer, are you good? Jim, you good?
Yeah.
Do you need to say anything, or are you good? This is just on the regular general?
No, just going down a bit so I can see the fees. I think everything is pretty good, all based on prior years. Yeah, I think we're all set there.
Okay, so, I want to go through this and then we're going to come back to the normal process. Okay, I just want to make sure we go through everything. Okay?
So, sorry, win this one? The camera problem?
What?
I do, just want to make a note that for some reason with the printer, all the top of the forms say city council, there's only one. The first part on page one is the only part that's city council, all the other ones have the top title for city council, but have nothing to do with city council.
Oh, okay, so it's the, it's the printing?
No, our salaries have not gone up 1,000%.
Oh, really? Right out to you.
Do you want me to just do a kind of an overview?
Yeah, I want you to, exactly.
This is probably where we talk about the allocation of staff time between water and sewer in this budget?
Exactly.
Okay.
And, and I just want, you know, people to know, because everybody's been working on the different sections together to make sure that this, we've reallocated things appropriately, checking with, you know, appropriate accounting rules and moving things around, and so a lot of work went into this, and I want to thank the department heads for all those meetings because seriously spent a lot of time to put this budget together and make sure that numbers made sense. So, council member, I'm going to let you kind of moderate.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this is, the thing that, you know, has generated a lot of questions and some heat around past budgets was the allocation of staff time, particularly administrative staff time, between the operations budget and the water and sewer budget. So, I just want to let you know where we ended up in this one, so you all understand it. So, regarding the treasurer clerk's office, we took the three combined salaries, we took, and health and health benefits, taxes, related taxes, et cetera. We took 25% of those and gave those, and gave that 25% to water and sewer. 12 and 1/2% to water, 12 and 1/2% to sewer. Then we took the remainder and divided it equally between the treasurer and the clerk's offices. And we did, we've done a fair amount of looking at this audit of time that took place through the spring, I'm sorry, through the fall, and it's pretty close to what was actually happening this fall. So, that's one, you'll see those lines line up, and you'll notice that for simplicity's sake, we did not try and divide out vacation and holiday time when we were playing around with these numbers at the end. We just let it all be a lump sum for salary, which included vacation and holidays. But, of course, when that gets coded, as the actual expenses take place, it will be coded appropriately for vacation and holiday. And then the second area where there was a lot of question was how much, what the percentage should be from basically the city administration office, which at the moment, I would think of in terms of a potential office, financial and office administrator, which we are currently advertising for right now, and perhaps at some point, some other kind of management, city manager or something there. So, we took those two numbers, because we can't really know for sure how that's going to work itself out this year. We added them together and we took 10% of that figure, actually, hold on, we didn't quite get through that fast. We, we were looking for where to make money back in the budget, and so we did not attribute a full year of the salary for the, for both those positions to this budget. We attributed a full year of salary for the office, finance and office administrator, and half a year for that other thing, city manager or whatever it ends up being, on the assumption that it takes a long time to fill a position like that, and it was quite likely to be toward the late fall or end of the year before we would manage to fill it. So, the first thing that happened was if we started with a total gross salary for those two positions of $160,000, we took out 50,000 of it and dropped that total figure down to 110,000, based on the fact that we weren't going to fill those positions, the second position immediately. Then, from that 110, we took 10% of that figure and we attributed that to the water and sewer budgets, 5%, am I right, Tom? It ended up being 5% to water, 5% to sewer, and we did that with the health and health benefits and the rest as well. And so, what you see in this budget is the remaining 90%, you know, the 90% of that $110,000, that's why it's $99,000 there. Okay, so, that's kind of how we got to where we got. I will say that when we look at the audit, the time audit that we did this fall, it was very tough to actually judge, because we didn't have, Becky Therian, of course, has not been here, so we didn't have any of her hours to go on, and much of that time, we didn't have a city manager position filled. So, there's still some estimation in this, but it was our best judgment that if those positions were filled and being appropriate support to water and sewer, 10% overall is about where we should end up. So, that's how we got to those figures. And that's where you see the most change from the budget we presented Monday night. I'll let Frank and Jim speak to anything specific to their parts of that admin page.
So, that's beginning with the treasurer?
You got me fooled on this thing.
You can take your time.
So, like Rick said, we took the gross salary and took 25% of it, moved it over, and these salaries you see in the clerk and treasurer are identical, that $81,750 includes vacation and holidays. Everything else, longevity pay went up this year because we're all getting longevity pay down there now. Office supplies went down a couple hundred dollars. Social Security is figured on 7.65%. Retirement is 9%, 9% or something like that, with the growth wage. The health insurance is the same for both clerk and treasurer, $20,400, because that's what I did, I took the actual cost of two single plans or what I get, because I'm on Medicare, and up to 12%. Actually, I get the $20,450 for my two family plan and their two singles. Go down through, everything else is pretty, pretty much the same. We got a copier lease, so we reduce from $1,800 in there this year to buy a new copier, we need it. That's $900, down up to $900, because we can lease a copier for the lease plan and the maintenance contracts for just under $1,800 total. So, it'd be $900 in the treasurer and $900 in the clerk. That's about, that's about it. I mean, the percentage is up a little bit, but that's because of the longevity pay and the health insurance is up 12%, and it's, it's pretty accurate. The clerk's office is basically the same thing, they're basically identical. Yeah, there is digital, digital, digitalization.
You got it.
You know what I mean? $4,000 in there, that's, that's not in the treasurer's part, that's only in the clerk's office, so that's the difference in the two, basically. And other than that, everything is, where it is, it's pretty well spot on.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
I have one more clarification.
Sure.
I also wanted to say, because it's hard to track, but the, there is a $14,000 reduction in the cost of communications because of the new contracts that we just signed as a council two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, whenever it was. And I just want to point out that Dennis did a huge job for us on renegotiating all of those contracts and bringing them down. It's hard to see in one place, because we had to audit all of them, figure out which departments they went in, and then even there, often they came out of two or three different locations in a particular department. But the total that got reduced because of those new contracts was $14,100, and a little bit of it shows up in almost every department.
Yeah, so we split and allocated across, so you'll be able to see that, okay? Thank you. Okay.
I'm good.
Good? Okay, let's, uh-huh.
Are we holding questions to?
Not, well, wait till, yeah, I just wanted Travis's part to go, because he didn't feel well. But you'll, we'll get there.
Want to go with Frank?
Yes.
Is this still under anything?
Yeah.
Taxless things?
Taxless things, so, planning zone.
Thank you.
Am I out here right here?
No, come on up, you, you have to stand, only Ann gets to sit.
So, although there were some significant discussions and awful lot of work done, as you some of you know, this week, very few changes from Monday night for me, some slight adjustments in communication, as Rick was mentioning, I did touch the office supplies just a little bit. However, what I did do, which is a change, not necessarily, it doesn't change the dollar amount, I pulled the grant management out of, it was in the city manager section under professional services, which is kind of not really descriptive, and I pulled it into my section and called it grant management. Didn't change the numbers at all, but does put the expense where the work is being done. Overall, if you combine those three departments, I think it was down $2,000 over what you budgeted last year. We did talk some about the reappraisal funds and so on and so forth, but I expect that we're going to discuss that later today. Okay, any questions?
None. I get to ask that question.
Okay.
Council President.
This salary as a job.
On which one? Where are you?
Right where, right where, Chris, it's grant management.
It's the 2080?
Oh, no.
Oh, you're talking?
Oh, from zero to $20,000.
No, from what we're paying until, what we're paying now to $20,000.
Oh, yes, I understand. So, last year, $30,000 is what we budgeted for Mike. The $20,000 is the 15-plus benefits and taxes and...
Got it, thank you.
I assume...
Yes.
You good?
Yes.
Treasurer, good? Okay, don't go away, you can sit, but...
Oh, good.
Wait, we need you, you're up to... Okay.
You want to go with your messible building, did much change there?
No, no significant change.
So, next would be fire department?
Yes. Okay. Fire department, step on up and thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, we don't have a very big budget, so, of course, changes in our budget percentage-wise look quite large because of that. The biggest jumps we have are in salaries, and part of that is the new admin position and the stipend for a chief. There is savings on that in health insurance and benefits, so it looks like a bigger jump than it actually is going to be. And a big jump in firefighter salaries, right now, we make $14.01 an hour, which is minimum wage, which, if you think about it, pretty low to ask people to get up at 2:00 in the morning, risk their lives to, to help other people who have hundreds and hundreds of hours of training and certifications and making minimum wage. So, the hope is, we get that up, we know we can't do it all at once, so, right now, we're proposing a $2 raise for firefighters and a $2.15 raise for officers, which will bring us to $16.00 and $17.00. The other two big line items we have are our station and our equipment. Station has been on the back burner for a long time, so, we added 15 in there this year for deferred maintenance. And the other thing is the trucks, they're, they're starting to age and they need some repairs and maintenance, and a lot of this we have estimates on already, so we know it's coming, whether we want it to come or not.
Right, and the deferred maintenance has really been the goddamn, I mean, this has been a longstanding issue.
Yes. So, the hope is, we start to increase now and over the years, we can start to build it, so we're not hitting the city all at once with a lot of expenses.
Do you know what the average pay for firefighters in a month, hourly rate for?
For call firefighters? I do not. I have reached out to other departments. Entry level is $17, $18 an hour. That's for entry level. Hopefully, we can make it where perhaps more certifications equal more hourly rate and potentially longevity. We can make some milestones in there as well, rather than flat rate. So, this is, this is step one, and hopefully, will be a step process to get us where we need to be.
Good? Good? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That just works. Thank you.
Evening. Well, I haven't made any big changes to my budget from the last one, I was up $212 from last year, and I'm down actually $2,207 as we speak. Of course, a big part of that is because we budgeted $90,000 for the stormwater projects. I think I'd put that back in there, I probably, with everybody's raise and the increases of insurance and everything, I probably would have been up around 4%, 5%. Currently, I am at a .14, negative 14, so, not much else to say, there's not much else there to cut.
Yeah, I know that you worked really hard, and I mean this sincerely, every department head that's been working with us, just making sure that every, it's a penny, every number has been looked at. And we've really gone into this to make sure everything's allocated appropriately in the right line of items and looked at each project, have pulled contracts and looked to see what is real here and what needs, how slim they could actually get going forward.
Any questions?
That's it. President Lashawn?
I'm also thinking.
Councilmember?
I'm curious about the back truck.
Sure.
Tom's been saving money for years. Did we ever figure out how much is in the second one?
Okay, so, I'm going to try to just generally speak to the committed fund issue. So, and I went over this with our auditors and then we all spoke about it. So, it's not cash that sits there, okay? It's a committed obligation. So, what that means is the people who believe that that money is going to be there, the obligation has been committed to, so at the point in time where it is due, the council can make a decision of how they would like to get that particular item, whether it be through financing or the fact there is cash on hand. So, the key with that is it's a commitment to the obligation, and that's always been a misunderstanding, because it's our equity as opposed to real cash. But the commitment doesn't go away, and we are actually going to be dealing with that after the budget, we're going to be dealing with the... We're going to be dealing with the discussion on removing the old commitments, so that going forward, we can have a clean, solid commitment each year. So to go to that point, the truck itself is expected in the two.
I was hoping it would be bought this year, but it's not going to get bought this year.
That was what I was leaning.
Yeah, but I wanted to understand, because that's been a big misconception, that people think that there's cash sitting there.
So what was this year, seventy and seventy? Seventy one?
Yeah, I think it was.
That's what I was hoping to put there, and that's solely up to the council. Currently, there is a hundred and sixty-five in the sinking fund. I have a remaining almost a hundred thousand of my public works money that was going to go to that. But, you know, the way things are right now, we'll take a look at that. That truck's six, seven, now four hundred, so you're not there. Okay, let me answer my question.
You good?
I'm good.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I've got a couple of changes since Monday's presentation. On the income side, I added five thousand on the Proud of Beach transient revenue. On the expense side, I adjusted the communications line, so there's four communications lines, I think it was forty-five hundred dollars, so that made a big difference. And then if you scroll down to Proud of Beach, the top salary line, that's a vacant position right now. So we readjusted that position, turned it into a part-time position, so that reduces that line, and it also reduces the retirement line, the health insurance line. So if you scroll down to the bottom, and, and I'm going to add that, you know, with that position, the, the work still remains, so the team is going to have to make up the slack, but we can do it.
Right, and, and we will revisit that.
Yeah, we'll re, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
See how it works.
Yeah, but we'll make it work. And then if you scroll down to the bottom, got a negative sixteen point three two percent. So that's where we are.
Counsel President, questions?
Uh, thank you, I'd work.
Thanks.
Okay, treasure, good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're probably not going to hear a lot of questions from us because we've been working every day off, so we, but we want to make sure you understand as much as possible. Okay? Okay.
Do you want to leave?
Sure. So. No significant changes under city landscaper. The position remains with a modest, the same kind of salary increase that we've done across the board, three percent. The, there's, there's no fluff in that. At this point, we've cut pretty much everything except the, the basic materials that Robert needs to do his work. Under conservation and development, these things are pretty well fixed, there's not a lot of flex in them. Understand that the VO, I understand that the bike path railroad thing is actually a, what do you call it, right of way, is that it, is that the right language, Tom? Right of way that we pay the railroad, so that's kind of fixed, or nothing's really changed in there. Health and welfare hasn't changed, it's pretty much the same. I'll just note that it has crossed our minds that one place where we could theoretically pull back another fifty thousand dollars is in the recycling project. We couldn't probably gain back the entire seventy-six thousand dollars, because some of those costs are going to be there whether or not we're running the project. Seems like it's at least worth asking the question whether this is still a high enough priority. So I, we have not touched it, it's still there in this budget. Nothing really under other expenses, I think, that jumps out. And then under debt service, there's been a lot of conversation about debt service. I'll just note, we did not change anything from Monday night's explanation about the new fire truck that we're expecting. We've done a, a guess on what we think it will cost us to service principal and interest payments on that truck once it arrives, which we're expecting roughly September, October, right Kevin?
Yes.
So that's where that sixty-seven thousand dollars come from, comes from, it looks like a pretty big number, because it hasn't been there before. Travis has updated all of the cruisers that we currently have notes on. There's nothing else. Oh, I'll just say a word, we, we, we looked quite a bit at the fire department gear lease and the fire extraction equipment lease, and those numbers are also fixed. They're similar to what Travis described with the tasers, right? Where this is an ongoing fee, and we do it because it will renew, you know, it will maintain the equipment. If I, well, and actually, that's not quite true, am I right? I'm, I'm wrong about that, right Kevin?
So the, if, if it's on the SCBA equipment, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
It's because they have to renew, is it? Few more of the years, I think, on the years of our, before. They're carbon fiber bottles that have to be replaced.
Yeah.
They have, they have shelf life.
Yeah. However, the other one, I think, is actually a loan that we're paying on, correct?
So the job, the job, the extraction equipment is?
We bought it.
Yes.
And we're paying a loan on that one.
My understanding, yes.
And then, you know, we've done another wild ass guess on the line of credit note interest. It's up, you know, we've raised it roughly, you know, what would that be, almost twenty percent? We don't really know what it'll be, because that number that we borrowed against the line of credit goes up and down throughout the year. But, you know, we've had the number up high enough that it makes sense that it's going to go up some. So that's where that fifty thousand dollars comes from. And then finally, somebody more qualified than myself should probably lead the conversation about capital expenditures.
You have it, contracting.
You know, there's, so under capital expenditures, I'll just state the dilemma that we have, which is that our department heads have been, in my personal estimation, acting responsibly when they know they've got something big, like a vac truck coming, right? They, or a new pickup, or street resurfacing, all those happen to be in Tom's area, but it could be in other areas. When they know something's coming, they, in several years in advance, they begin trying to set that capital aside. That capital is, as the mayor has said, not a cash movement, it's an obligation, a commitment that we've made as a council to try and do that. And as long as there's a lot of money in our reserve, when one of those things hit, there's no problem, right? We, we pay for it out of that reserve, and, and life goes on. Of course, if the reserve doesn't exist, then the only way to, we'll have to find another way to do it, the most likely way would be, of course, cred, uh, debt. So we went around and around about whether we should try this year just to look at the actual expenses that are going to hit us, things like a truck that was ordered a year and a half ago that we expect to arrive, and we're going to have to pay for it. And finally decided that it was too confusing to try and shift that gear. So basically, these numbers, I don't think have changed at all, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, but I think we basically have left these the same as they were when we looked at this together on Monday night. And we, we, the council, in my estimation, are going to have to look really carefully at the question of where, how we replace that reserve, how we make sure that the money is there when we need it for these various things, and how we can reinforce what I believe has been a healthy habit of trying to set aside that money in advance, year by, year. So, do you want to add anything to that? Because it's, I'm not sure I'm describing it well.
No, you, you did very well.
Thank you very much.
I'm not sure, I'm going to just pass my license to you.
Thank you.
You did. So I also want everybody to understand that we had a, a discussion where the department heads will now be looking at their various projects and commitments, and they're going to be putting that plan and getting it to us, and we're going to sit down with everybody to see where these assets need to be, when these projects and assets, timing wise, need to be addressed. And we will be, as I said, making movement to uncommit the prior funds, because you need to do that prior to the next quarter, so that we can go forward, and then they can continue appropriately to account for each reserve. We will make appropriate motions when there are sinking funds to give the authorization to have those sinking funds, so the treasurer can do his job appropriately, because he definitely knows what he's doing, but we have to do the legality around it. So everybody now knows they're going to be working together, and as Councilmember Alfred Chase said, the, the department heads have been responsible, and it is just kind of a misunderstanding of what is cash and what is not cash, and what is really rolling into an equity on a rollover of equity. And so that just took a lot of accounting and understanding and discussion. I do have, Mr. Bernier, if you do know, you were going to check on some of the recycling numbers, you didn't, you said you were going to reach out, did anyone get back to you on that yet?
Well, as far as facility, we do not have to run the facility. We still choose not to. The trash haulers have to offer recycling pickup in, in the city. We would still have to be part of the household house waste days, which would be upwards of twenty thousand. And I did reach out to Casella, they haven't got back to me yet. They feel that may, might give them an influx of people that bring their trash or the recycling to Casella, so they're talking amongst themselves to see what they might want to charge us to save. But there still would be a significant savings. We rent two containers, one we own. But again, that's, that's solely up to, for council.
Okay, but thank you for that, because I know you were reaching out, and I just wanted everyone, the council, to have an update, and I appreciate that you did that research for us. Okay. Any questions here from the council?
I have a theoretical, I guess. So we have appropriations that we vote on as a city every year. Is it possible to gauge the interest of having a recycling center by putting it as an appropriation on the ballot?
Definitely an option. When we, and actually, I spoke, you know, the treasurer, who's going to be putting together the language, et cetera, for our warnings, right?
Correct, right.
So we're going to be doing that on the twenty-seventh, I believe, right? We plan on possibly getting that, the warning.
I had that to warn it like February second.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so we had it for the twenty-seventh, I believe, is where we're putting that.
Right.
And so, yes, that is definitely an opportunity to, if we want to do something.
Right, because I know it's been a discussion for several years. I'll be honest, I've been on the fence, because there's been many, mo, most of the people that I'm related to or friends would use that facility, but it does seem rather redundant when there's another facility down the road, and if it's cost-saving enough, then I think it's something we should look into. Personally, I think if we put it on the ballot, and also it's a population, or popularity, if it is necessary, then we continue with it. If it's not, then we can move on.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, you said it was prox, approximately two hundred people who may be using it.
We did that probably four years or so ago. We just kind of took, we kept a list of people that were using it, and we figured it was around a little over two hundred residents that were using it.
So then it could actually go out that, that way for the, you know, popular vote to make that decision? Okay?
I agree.
Okay.
No, I have no other questions.
What's your thoughts on that?
I, I would be willing to test those waters, and I think doing it through an appropriation, if it feels like that's a, I don't, I don't know the mechanics of it.
Some opportunity, right.
If it's an opportunity, then I, I'd be willing to support it. So.
Yeah, a council decision, you can put an appropriation out there, but if you do that, and in fact, it'll reduce the budget, that, the recycling in the budget, but don't forget that those appropriations are separate taxation themselves.
Correct.
Or whatever, in the final bottom line of a tax rate, that amount's going to be in there.
Correct.
Assuming the voters voted for it.
If they voted for it.
Assuming the voter votes for it, yes.
That's right, right. But there will be some things that at this point in time, we need their choice.
Yeah, you'll know whether they want it or not.
Right, exactly, because it's gotten to the point where some things, it's their choice, and we need to, so it's a good idea.
My other thought on that was if it's voted upon, then it gives some time to, for that transition to figure out how, I mean, to Casella or talking to, to the, your own trash haulers, so that the recycling's happening, so, um, that's my position on it.
Yeah, no, and, and well taken. Okay? Next.
Do you want to go water, sorry?
Yes.
Discuss, that's another discussion.
Yeah, do we want to, let's wait for that, let's go to.
Just the general recap?
General recap.
I don't, Chris, do you want to summarize this one?
You're doing so well. Um, is this grand list?
That's the, the number that was appropriately changed, please sign what was updated.
That's updated through this year, Chris, the actual tax rate would be figured on what is submitted as of April two thousand and twenty-five, but I think it's, it'll go up some from there, but I think that's a conservative estimate.
So as proposed, taxes to be raised would be five million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents for a proposed tax rate of one point six four three two, which is an increase of, let's say, four point five eight two percent.
An increase over last year's approved budget, correct?
Yes, yes.
Um, I know that you had, some people had some questions on the grants. Do you want to ask your questions on grants before we?
That's the. That's the water sewer grants.
Yeah, so you're, you're okay, only on the water sewer, okay, I didn't know if you were, if it was anything else.
No, to be honest, my big focus has been on water sewers.
Okay, so we'll hold that till we get there. Okay? Next. Good, right? Okay. So, any questions here? I'm going to.
I might just add. Clark, because we haven't had a chance to talk this week, the, the fundamental change from Monday night is that the number was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase over last year's budget on Monday night, and now it's, I think it's two hundred and eighty thousand or something very close to that. So we've cut a substantial amount out of this budget. I think, you know, I don't see, having now lived inside this budget pretty deeply for the last two weeks, I don't see a lot of other places where we're going to cut, and we've done it at a time when healthcare went up, how many percent?
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent, you know, every, everything, of course, has gotten more expensive, so I feel like we've been as careful as we can be, and I think you, you all know, my hope Monday night was to see how we could get it to nothing.
Yeah.
And I'm not seeing it, I'll just say, I'm not seeing it.
Okay, so, um. Of course.
All right, just before.
Oh, and actually, can I just add one more thing?
Sure.
The last thing I want to say about that is, one thing that really shifts this, of course, is that this year, this budget represents a far different percentage of those administrative salaries being allocated to water and sewer. So we've made that transition at a four point five eight percent increase, at the same time that we brought back a lot of the expense on administration from water and sewer to operations. So it's worth noting that that's a piece of why we're struggling so hard to keep it flat this year.
I just want to acknowledge and thank department heads for cutting a hundred and, what did I say, a hundred and seventy?
Hundred and seventy, if you call it.
Already tight budget, so, you're seeing, and I really appreciate that, thank you.
So if the council has no further questions at this point, then is there a motion to approve the budget as presented?
Certainly.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Your motion in a second. Now, any questions, Mr. Willow? Or comments?
I'm sorry, okay, I have, yeah, I have several questions.
I never use a comments, but we're going to hear them, so.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, but I need to hear them, so you can get to sit, but you, I just need to hear it.
Sure. So the first thing that occurred to me is in terms of income. We have the interest on the wall. We have the interest on the Walmart mark funds in the section near the end of income after, it's hard going back, it's, it's under other interest income. Um, and the interest on the Walmart fund, and I understand what's left in the Walmart fund now is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the interest that you budget is eight hundred dollars for a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, um, sum of money. Um, if I had four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I put it in a CD. A six-month CD would earn you eighteen thousand dollars approximately, not eight hundred dollars, on that, um, Walmart fund. And if you said, well, maybe we're gonna use half of the Walmart fund between now and six months from now, I'd say you will put two hundred and forty thousand, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty thousand in the Walmart fund, uh, in, in an interest there in CD, and it would be nine thousand dollars more. But I think that you probably could hold off using that money. That's been sitting there, started at six hundred thousand, I can't imagine ten years ago or more, and it's now down to four fifty for things you expect. So please, consider putting a lot of the, the interest, um, things that you're earning interest on into these CDs. They're still at four percent or four point three five if you go to the SumSIC. Um, and that'll be an extra two thousand dollars that would be there. And that would, that would reduce the amount of taxes you'd have to catch, uh, get from us.
So I'm just gonna, i- if you don't mind, on some of these things, like, these are good ideas.
Oh, I know, I have an answer.
I just want some of them, um, I'd like to kind of interact a little bit. So particularly cuz it's the Walmart funds. And those would have to be council policy decisions. So they could be brought to the council and that could always be done after the budget, of course. Remember also that the council has approved the revitalization plan. And there are going to be expenses there. So that's why to just say we're gonna put that in the budget at this point in time tonight would be inappropriate because we have to have on the twenty-seventh discussions about these different funds that are needed and how things are going to be paid for. And that will be the time where those decisions can be made saying, okay, funds are sitting in Walmart. Are those going to be used or not? If not, then the council can vote and say, we would like to put that money into savings. So right now, you will not see anything chosen to be put there. Not that it will not change after the policy discussions based on the different obligations for the revitalization plan. So I just wanted to let you know that's not something, it's not being looked at, but it's not going to be in this budget tonight because we have a lot of policy discussions and decisions to make on that. Okay, now go ahead, sorry.
And, and, but then I noticed on, and it's, this is minor in comparison, but I noticed on charging income for the cars that are being charged, there's no, um, sum of money. You, uh, two years ago, we got twelve hundred dollars for the charging income. Last year, we got fifteen hundred, and this year, we budgeted nothing. Why didn't we budget some money under the street department, EV car charging income? Why didn't we budget some money for the charge fees that we get for having one of those things? It's minor in comparison to some other places.
Oh, I see, okay. So where, um, that particular number, just be an actual, um.
It's an oversight.
Oversight.
I'm sorry?
That's, I think that was an actual oversight.
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you, okay, and that could be adjusted, I have to adjust it, it could be made right now.
Okay, good.
So could you put a note on the side that says, Mr. Rillo has got us?
No, I'm not, I'm not that to your chip.
No, I'm just.
Madam Mayor, Chris has permission, and I think he does, and you just have.
But again, he can actually put that fifteen hundred in if it's council.
And under, under city council, um, there's your salaries. Then there's travel and miscellaneous. And two years ago, you used two hundred and fifty-six dollars for travel. Um, last year, twenty-three, twenty-four, used five hundred and ten. Um, and you keep budgeting twelve hundred. But what about coming down, um, seven hundred dollars or so, or at least, um, yeah, six hundred dollars on how much you're gonna use for travel and miscellaneous, cuz you haven't used it in the past?
So, I mean, we could come down there. I mean, but I think that right now, because the way things have been coded and allocations are changing, it would make more sense to be a little bit aggressive there.
I'm not vested.
No, I'm just saying, yeah, I'm just, that's kind of, uh, something that I don't think should change because on that particular line item, as you said, they haven't been using it. But now with more expansion, I would hope that the council does get more involved in these types of things.
Okay, and I, I sort of understand why you changed from sixty percent or so for the city manager salary to be paid by water and sewage, down to ten. But the actual, uh, numbers you got from the study were zero, as I recall. So it, it's very, it's sort of arbitrary and it would be nice if water and sewer, which is the fund that you're gonna say, um, has been having deficits, didn't pay for things that where you had no substantive evidence that anything more than zero percent should go to water and sewer.
And so to that, remember the, the quarter that was used, okay? And then, um, to do the actual time. Um, and then we had, um, and it could change if we used a different quarter as things go on. So if we continue to do the whole entire year, you would see things throughout the different season where those things could change. Plus also, we had, um, a change in somebody sitting in the slot. And, you know, we had a comptroller who was out. So I wouldn't rely so much on the zero number. I would think that you need to be more conservative and say, you know, there is going to be some actual time there, just not going to be that thirty-five to fifty percent.
Okay, and now, now going down to the city treasurer and the clerk positions. I recall in the charter, it said that the treasury should not be used for water and sewer billing or something to that effect. And what's happened here is that the city treasurer's department has had half of, um, its, of the sum that it's gonna take from water and sewage. And the clerk's department has had fifty percent, um, associated with it. And my, and my real question to our city treasurer is when you do water and sewer billing, uh, if I may ask through, through you, Madam Mayor, how much of it is city treasury kind of work and how much of it is clerk work?
Well, I think it's happened, happened myself. All, all the financial part, the actual building, structure, but all of the work, putting that stuff, running the bills and stuffing it, mailing it out, that's all clerk stuff.
So then my question then.
There's two, let me finish, Anne. There's two positions down there, clerk and treasurer. But we work at office as if it's one. We don't, we don't divide our time, we don't put time sheets in for treasurer and time sheets in for clerk.
I, I get you, but the point is, um, if you do twenty-five percent of your work and for water and sewage as the clerk, and then you do the rest of it as the treasurer, what does it mean in the charter when it says something the equivalent of the treasurer shall not charge anything for water and sewage?
Well, I can tell you this, we can take all the treasure part out and put it in the clerk, it'll mean it's the same thing.
That wouldn't be fair though, because you've just said that half of it is, um, the treasury work.
So I, I mean, let me try it, cuz I don't think that's exactly what the, the treasurer's saying. I think what the treasurer was saying is that there are, um, three people in there and the overlap of assistance is how it's bundled. So rather than have them, each person there sitting and saying, okay, I did this today. My function is more for the treasurer. It really is because it's not like there's a third or a fourth person working there. So I think what, um, it, it's not as divided out when he did give us his time. He did try to divide as much as he possibly could appropriately, and it was balanced. So, um, I get where you're, where you're going, okay? But I, I, I do get where you're going. But what I'm saying is I don't think that it was, I'm just gonna lump everything together and divide it by two. I think that, no, not you, I'm just saying, but with the way I heard the explanation here, not, not from you, when I heard the explanation, it sounded like, well, you know, I'm one in the same is where I'm going. It's too distinct, yeah.
My, my comment on that is I don't think that anything from water and sewer should be charged to water and sewage that's associated with the city treasurer component of what he does for water and sewage unless, unless you're telling me that my interpretation, which could be
And that's what I'm going to go back and check.
Be incorrect about the charter.
And that's something I will have to actually go back and check and look at that and discuss that with our city attorneys. And that's a simple adjustment to a budget, if in fact that's what the charter says. But I'm having it in front of me right now and I know that you've brought this up before and I think we've looked at it before, but we can check that on, on the legal side. But that won't change the number, it'll just change the allocation of where it goes.
That's what, that's what I'm thinking, taking off all the, all the ones, just the numbers.
Uh, yeah, I just, right. And so that, that is something that, um, I will check with, and we, if, when we do the vote, if that changes, we can make all those little changes, yeah.
I do have some more questions, but I, I keep losing track of which way I'm going on this thing, so. Let me just, let me just get to that, maybe. I apologize.
You need a better administrative support person.
Pardon?
Yeah, I know you don't.
Um, okay, I'm going this way. I was wondering, why did the tax listing salary that was at forty-two thousand in twenty-three, twenty-four actually go down under a purpose to thirteen thousand now? Uh, did that salary go somewhere else?
No, uh, so Becky had allocated.
The comptroller, right.
Excuse me?
The comptroller, I was like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Titles versus names of people, thank you.
So the comptroller, uh, had allocated that eighty-twenty in the budget, which I actually think is correcting what I did this year. However, the allocation on the payroll, the way that they, they divided it, eighty-twenty, the opposite way. It's supposed to be eighty to zoning, twenty to assessor. They put eighty on the assessor and twenty on zoning.
Okay, so it's been corrected.
Yeah, well, it's been reworked, yeah.
Yeah, it will be, yeah.
And I, I was just wondering, or, or, I know you guys have worked really hard with lawyers, but that's, that fee, um, of actuals in, under corporate counsel. I was just wondering, maybe, maybe if you thought about all of the violation, open meeting violations, certainly, that complaints that have been made, whether or not, having seen almost every variety of them that could possibly be coming from some one person, that maybe somebody could diarize what the response should be so that we wouldn't have to consult the lawyer every time, but that we could just say, oh, that's like, that's like what happens, you know, and on to send the fifth.
So I'm gonna address that right now, okay? Um, it would be nice if we had somebody, which is part of our reorganization of who we're looking for internally, who has that expertise. Um, you can't, you can do that with somebody who's an administrative person when you're not dealing with this type of liturgy that goes on in there. And remember lawsuits being filed and so on. So at this point in time, because we're in such a litigious mode, it is, um, extraordinary. But we are in a litigious mode, everything is litigious. And so hopefully that will stop eventually. I don't see that pattern of behavior stopping. But my hopes are that maybe, um, other, other vehicles to stop that behavior will cause it to take place. So at this, and so the key right now is at this point in time, the legal, um, advice is needed.
Okay, um, going forward.
I'm only giving you two more questions.
I'm sorry. I'd like to know in, um, let's see, in the streets department, under administration, whose salary is in administration now? Whose salary is in that thirty-six five oh eight is, which I know is, part of it's gone to water and sewage. But is that only Tom's salary? I'm sorry?
No, but he just went too fast.
Sorry, what was the line again?
Uh, I, I only have lines on this. It would be under, um, public works and it would be under administration expenses.
So back to public works, Chris.
Oh, okay. So all the numbers look the same.
Indeed, I know that feeling.
This one?
No, I think we're in the streets, you said in, right?
Well, yeah, it's public works, uh, expenses, I think is the first category after revenue. And there's administration.
I see.
And the, the, um, salary, the listed proposed is thirty-six five oh eight. Whose salary is in there? And we're, and is the rest of it in water and sewage?
Yeah, sure. Come in here.
Either of our comptrollers, ten percent of the comptrollers' pay always went to that.
I thought that comptrollers' pay would no longer be in administration, but it would be back in, um, regular, general administration. Pardon?
No, this is not water and sewer.
This is public works.
Okay, and, and you're saying that that salary includes both yours and the comptrollers?
Correct.
And what about that ch- jumping larger vacation, um, amount of thirty-three thousand, which is almost comparable to the salary? How does that get divided up?
You under admin?
Uh, admin, the second line, which is vacation.
That's everybody's, everybody's under that one item.
Everybody in streets?
Yes.
Okay. And I noticed that, um, under street maintenance, actuals for twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-four thousand dollars was spent in pay. Uh, and now you're proposing a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That seems like, well, it is a thirty or so percent increase, which is more than the union agreements and everything, so why is it that high?
Again, I, I, every year, everybody asks that question. I do a spreadsheet on the full department, break out of their salaries, vacation and holidays. And you subdivide them between street maintenance, winter maintenance, garage and facility, store maintenance, all those line items, all those salaries with, that are totaled with all my crew are just subdivided there. Again, it's, it's a best guess. I could put them all onto one, one salary item if, if you'd want. But I just put them around where I think we're gonna spend the most of our time. Some years you do, some years you don't. But the, the salaries, but all, if you add up every salary within those, those items, with, with street, winter, they'd all tally to cover my whole group.
Okay, and, and winter maintenance went from a hundred and one thousand to one sixteen, so you'd raise that up too.
Same, same thing there. I just jockey the salaries around. It does, the bottom line is they'll, they'll all total to the same amount. Doesn't matter where I put them.
And the garage went up from two hundred and sixteen dollars. And the garage went up from two hundred and sixteen dollars to twenty-four thousand. Is there some reason for that?
Salaries?
Yeah, salaries. Regular pay in twenty-three to twenty-four was two hundred and sixteen dollars, and in your proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, it's twenty-four thousand.
Again, the guys fill out a timesheet, and whatever, wherever they put their time is where that time goes. If you take all those, and if you take all those salaries from all them line items and total them up, like, if you do a spreadsheet, it would match where all my employees' salaries go to. So, in the end, it really doesn't matter where I put it. I could put them all under one salary item, if that would be easier for everybody. We've always had these breakout items, but if the guys fill out the timesheet, that's where it's gonna go. So, stormwater might be three times bigger than what I have here. But in the end, salaries are gonna be what they are.
Well, but it's important, I'm sorry, I think it's, as a comment, I think it's important that we get a good idea from the kinds of different work they do, how much, how many of them are needed in a particular area, to see whether or not we need more employees or fewer employees. And I'm not suggesting anybody be fired, but if attrition occurred and you didn't need as many employees, you might not hire another one.
So, I'm gonna comment on that, okay? Because I think that the department had, this particular department, and it is just really astute when it comes to identifying the employees he needs and how he's transferring his employees around to cover the different projects and how, when weather changes or different emergencies happen. So, the way that he's allocating these funds right now, I think it would, it's more clear for his identification of projects and working with his employees to see how it works, as opposed to putting it all into one lump. But now, I'm gonna ask you to take a breath, because I wanna see if there's any other questions. Ms. Cracker?
And it may have, some of these may have already been answered.
It's okay.
Last year, we spent a long time hearing, I think it was last year, about a huge increase in health insurance. And the first time I've heard it mentioned was when Mr. Johnson just mentioned something about a twelve percent increase. Is, do we have another large health insurance increase across the board for city employees this year? I guess that's the question, because I hadn't heard it mentioned.
Yeah, we just did the contacts anyway, through all the time checks, and it's all included. We voted, the council voted on all of the contacts.
Okay, I just hadn't heard, last year was such a big, such a large increase that it was a big part of this conversation about how, you know, we've gone through the budget, and then all of a sudden, we get this huge increase for health insurance. So, I just wanna make sure. Heard about the new fire truck. I'm okay with the recycling center, we use it religiously, and I would hate to see it go away, but, you know, gotta do what you gotta do. And then, the only other thing that came to me is, we spent a lot of time in the last year talking about water meters, and I don't know if that's, you know, where we're going with that.
We're moving that at the water and sewer, the rate, we have that up here.
Right, and I just wanna make sure, because I haven't had a chance to really look at this. Is that built in here, in the water budget at all, to do any kind of?
But we're not on that, but we're going, we have that on here, the actual water and sewer rate discussion, when we get there.
No, but I'm not talking about rates. I'm actually talking about physically getting the water meters in. And so, part of the discussion, I think, in the past was, I mean, we have to pay somebody. It's gotta, it's gotta come from somewhere. Do we have a fund set aside to try to get this thing done? Or am I just not making myself clear?
I'm not understanding the question, but I think, I think I understand the question. Are you asking, is there like a special fund, a sinking fund? And that's what we were talking about, so at this point in the morning?
Well, and I'm not even looking for a sinking fund, but...
I'm saying, like, a fund, is that, no. At this point in time, no. That's why I said, we need to have a hard discussion on council approving specific funds going forward, of this is gonna be used for this, so that the treasurer can easily do his job.
Right, okay. I'm just concerned, I'm, you know, continue to be concerned about the whole revenue piece of water and sewer, when there's such disparity. And, and I just see it, it's, you know, it's got to be done, it's got to be done.
Yeah, no, I understand, that's been going on since twenty-eleven, or before, so.
Yes, exactly, okay.
Yes.
To pick up on Laurie's question, which I think got misunderstood, every year, in the budget, has been a substantial amount, has been put in for water meters. Those water meters were not bought, they were not installed, and that money evaporated. I'm sure it was used somewhere, but it certainly wasn't used for the meters. And that has been an issue for many of us, because most of us, we knew the process that the meters in, there was a long waiting list, and for a variety of reasons, it never happened. Has money been, I don't have a list of, like, any time now, has money been budgeted for meters again? And is there any way of making sure that that money, instead of just evaporating, the meters are not bought, goes somewhere safe, so that it's sitting there when the meters, because the cost keeps going up for them?
Yeah, and that's what I think it just answers, that we're going to, the council's going to vote on specific funds to hold these monies, which has never been done, so it's not modeled together. That is definitely a process that's going to happen immediately. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were all talking the same widely.
Can I just jump in? Just to my help a little bit, there is a line item in water and sewer. Oh, that's our next listed item.
Right, okay, that's where I was going, we're not on the right bud, right there. Yes, ma'am.
I did print these out for the council, and most of them are still relevant.
So, could, could you just, yeah, just to ask, make your comment?
Okay. My comment is that the prior audit shows a three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollar and change deficit, and according to state statute, you're supposed to budget in money to cover a deficit in the next year of at least five percent. And I was wondering if the council had done that. The other thing is, in the summary, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget is different than the one that was presented to the voters and included in our annual report, which is what I have on a copy here. Fire department income for the Coventry share is updated in the, the old budget, I did this while it was online, page eight of what's online, not the same here. And it is not included on the summary page, so there is a huge blank on your summary page, if you look at it, under income, and that's the fire department. And it brings me a question, if there are any other errors in the spreadsheet. I mean, we have a forty-eight thousand dollar discrepancy between what we approved last year and what you're using for your base figures this year, okay? Which is, I think, rather significant. The health insurance for, I'll summarize this, the city office staff is sometimes based, I think you mentioned, Rick, on the monthly premiums, and thirty-five percent, but the other departments are eleven percent, which just, the union is eleven percent. By the way, you did really excellent job, I think, on this, and I should've said that to begin with. But I got stymied there. The grants administration position, I thought, which you voted on, was a, sorry, is it contract or is it a salary? It seems to be maybe a lump sum in tax listing or planning and zoning, but I thought it was voted on at fifteen thousand, but it's in there as twenty. And there is some confusion as to what, where the thirty thousand is, that seems to have been in the prior year's budget, the move from, I gathered, the city manager to the tax listing, so that was a question. The debt service, there was, I thought, an approved loan for Gardner Park remediation. Should that not be in debt service, the loan repayment and the interest? And then, the other ones are on water and sewer, so I won't cover that. And one thing, just to say, that the fuel amounts seem to be really too low compared to the historic record. And if you want, I did make copies of these things, but you don't necessarily need it, obviously.
So, I have a... Ms. Caroline?
Yes, I wanted to ask for some clarification on Councilman Alfred Chase's explanation about the city manager's salary, about fifty percent being taken off. Because I'm, the fiscal year runs from July first to June thirtieth. So, if fifty percent has been taken off because of an expected delay in hiring, you're approving the fiscal year budget of twenty-five, twenty-six, that would mean that you don't intend to have a city manager until January of two thousand and twenty-six, like, a year from now. Maybe that's what the council is intending, I don't know. But that seems a bit extreme, so I would like some clarification on that. And then, the other need for clarification is, when you were talking about the sinking funds not really being cash, but being rather a commitment, and that when the time arrives, the council then makes a decision how they're gonna, you know, satisfy that commitment or that obligation, and they can decide if it's gonna come from cash, or financing, or whatever other funds are available. I was curious if you, if that applies just to the general fund, or if that applies to the water and sewer funds as well? Thank you.
Thank you. So, those are intent questions that have really nothing to do with this particular budget. What the council plans on doing with job descriptions is not pertinent to this. So, I have a motion.
I do want to clarify a question, just in case.
Sure, absolutely.
The man directed it, Rick, is there any conflict of interest with NDD salaries in this budget? Does anybody need to recuse or anything?
I can speak to that. Yeah, I don't intend to recuse in this matter. The budget has been steady at thirty thousand dollars a year, long predating my arrival at Newport Downtown Development. We've signed as a council an attestation to the state that we would not reduce that amount in order to assure that the state will continue to fund Newport Downtown Development. And the last thing I'd say about that is that the, the total budget now of Newport Downtown Development is in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We raised, goodness, this year, I think it will be in the neighborhood of a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars from sponsorships from businesses and foundations. And the commitment from the Board of NDD, when I became a part of the council, was that we could easily make a commitment to raise all of our salaries for Newport Downtown Development from other funding, not from city funding.
Is there any council opinion on that?
Well, it would not be a council opinion, but we do have Varia's on board, on here, who can talk to process, but as far as when you say council opinion, do you mean? Counsel. Legal counsel, okay. And so, I don't know if Varia can speak to that process-wise, or speak to that, or if we need to go into executive session, if it's legal advice or whatever.
What is the council, is he just asking for my opinion on? Sorry, Chris.
Sure. If there's a conflict of interest, because thirty thousand dollars goes toward the NDD, which Rick is the director of, is there a conflict of interest if Rick votes on this budget?
And so, I think, from the policy, yeah.
The legal opinion, I provided a legal opinion to the mayor this morning on that question. And I, I'd like to keep that confidential. But if there's any question as far as process goes, there's the Newport City policy, where council member, the Newport City policy, at section six. A public officer who has reason believe that he or she may have a conflict of interest in particular matter prior to participating in any official action on the matter publicly disclosed, at a meeting or public hearing that he or she has an actual or perceived conflict of interest in the matter under consideration, disclose the nature of the actual perceived conflict of interest, which the council member has. Alternatively, the public officer may request that another public officer recuse him or herself from the matter due to a conflict of interest. Such a request should not be considered in order for the officer to recuse him or herself, but any member of the council may make such a request. Once there's been a disclosure of an actual or perceived conflict of interest, other public officers may be afforded an opportunity to ask questions or make comments about the situation. If previously unknown conflict is discovered during a meeting or herein conducted by a public body, if in this time, the public body may take evidence, change the conflict, if appropriate adjourn to executive session to address the conflict. And just to note, there's a new municipal code of ethics that the legislature just passed that would require the member disclosing and addressing the conflict by moving forward to submit a written statement that addresses, that addresses listed factors in the statute. The council, I would recommend that the council member, if they were accused, to submit that to the clerk, just to have on file by early next week, if possible. But, so that's the process that the council has adopted to address this. If they wish to make any further inquiries, we can adjourn to executive session under proper motions to discuss this. But, yeah, so I hope that addresses what I can do in open session. I'll answer any questions too.
Fine, tell me what you'd like to do.
My opinion is that it's been disclosed by Rick. Funding's not going directly to him, it's not being initial beneficiary because of this. So, I'm fine with the decision of him not refusing himself.
So, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post aye. Ayes have it, the motion is carried, and you've passed your budget, thank you.
We didn't pass the budget.
Well, you know, we passed, yeah. Passed over the, we passed over the. Next item on the agenda is the water and sewer rate discussion, with a potential vote.
I want to wrap me on expenses first.
Your call.
I think I would move to expenses.
So, this is the area you want to...
Madam Mayor, I wonder if we might want to invite the Department of Public Works?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, good, Chris is ready.
Yeah, sorry.
You good? Thank you, good.
So, we've worked on this a little bit more. Rick, thank you for the help too. We did make some more changes in the admin under the salaries, adjusting the city clerk treasurer's time and five percent of city manager and the comptrollers, which would be all in that salary line item. The only vacation money and holidays is... The only vacation money and holidays is, uh, is mine. We put their salaries all as, as one with their vacation and holiday. Other than that, we, I haven't made any other changes to the sewer budget, um, as we speak. So, it'd be the same thing underwater to under admin with the salaries as we did with the sewer admin for controller and city manager and Jim Stengel. Again, I haven't made any changes, uh, to the water either. I think the one thing I would like to say, uh, it's still in there, I don't know, I'd asked the question. So, looking for pricing to get both wells serviced cleaned and, uh, done this year if possible. I put sixty thousand dollars in there. The question is, we have two hundred and thirteen thousand in the water treatment facility sinking fund. If we wanna do, if legally we could do that, if we wanted to relieve ourselves of at least whatever that number's gonna be, I'm guessing it's gonna be around fifty, sixty thousand, we could use those funds and not budget for that. If not, I'll leave that number there.
Could you give me those lines again?
So, that would be, oh, it didn't come up number-wise, so being under capital, capital expenditures underwater. So, just below vehicle, I've got water well redevelopment. And then, below that, under debt services, uh, you have WTF sinking fund. So, we have a sinking fund set up for the water treatment facility, and there's currently two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in there. I know it's designated for that, I did ask questions, I don't know if that's something we can do. If not, we can leave that money as is, but I know, being a year that we're struggling, if we could utilize those funds and not put it towards the other line item, I guess we could leave that up to you guys to make that decision. Other than that, I've made no other changes to water and sewer.
Any questions?
No.
Ask them all. Any questions?
Is that a possibility, is it?
Yeah, um, it, yeah, it's always a possibility. I think that the prudent thing would be though, to wait until we do the actual motion, which is most probably gonna be on the twenty-seventh. It could be today, but I prefer to have that on the twenty-seventh, after we go back and look at some of these, to, um, uncommit all of those, because that's a very important motion that we have to talk about. And so, as I said, we could do it now, but I would prefer to have that on the twenty-seventh if we come back with any other changes or issues that we have. I think it makes more sense. Are you good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Are you good with that? So, I would let it sit there for now.
Sure. Any questions?
On the expense page, you know.
Okay.
I do, I'm not sure.
Wait, come on.
I'm not sure if Tom's the one, just maybe General, so. There's the, oh, where is it? Beside water tower project, the water funds, ARPA funds, the water reservoir cover.
Mm-hmm.
Were those grant-based, or are we getting grant monies for those to replace the, what would cost us, or?
So, the reservoir cover in the liner was, we utilized the ARPA funds for. So, that was a one point four, I believe, million we got, and that was around four hundred thousand. The remaining portion of the ARPA funds were used for the, the new water tower.
And Frank, and maybe Mr. Chaney, you can talk to some of the grant money.
I, I concur with what Tom D. said about the ARPA funds, although, uh, we are also able to get reimbursed at twenty percent, uh, for expenses that were paid by ARPA funds.
That help?
It does, thank you. I've kind of answered my questions.
You're good on the expense side? Okay, let's keep moving. We're doing the council first.
How do I do this?
Do you want to move to the revenue side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, well, I'll note what I feel like I've now said in numerous meetings, which is that we have a problem, um, that is multi-layered. If you look at line fourteen on our spreadsheet, which I know you all can't see, it would be, I'm looking at sewer user fees, the first line under sewer income. The projected total, which I think is basically just what we would need in order for this budget to balance, in sewer user fees would be one point four four three million dollars. And in the last full year numbers that we have, we took in for sewer user fees, one point one two two million dollars, a difference of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And similarly, if you look down below water rent, water income, where it says water rents, we have a proposed, a, a necessary amount that we would have to raise to make, to meet these expenses of one point oh three two, almost one point oh three three million dollars. And in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, we only, uh, took in seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, a difference of roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you add those two together, it seems to me that we're, at the moment, if we don't, if we don't do something dramatically different, we are setting ourselves up for a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall, more or less. There's an added challenge, which is that we know that we have, um, used our, uh, reserve fund for the city, so that it no longer, we don't have the reserve fund that we had some several years ago. And I don't have the access to the exact number that could be attributed to water and sewer shortfalls over the last, whatever number of years, six years, seven years, at the top of my head. But the number I keep coming back to approximately is one point five million dollars that water and sewer has effectively used from the reserve fund, plus whatever we've gone into, uh, debt on the line of credit to do. And so, at the very least, it seems to me that it would be prudent for us to consider how we can replenish the reserve fund for the city so that when we need to make a capital purchase, or when we need to manage cash flow, those things can be done. And the only, I, I'm really asking this question of council. The only way I can imagine doing that right now would be to borrow money and build the debt service for that money into the water and sewer budget before we set the new rates, so that it's included as a part of the, um, the budget that we are passing. So, those are my kind of observations, that we've got two different things that are mul, that are layered on top of each other here, and it seems like we would, we, we really need to address both somehow.
And, and to that point, it's more, um, I think, not just one, uh, financing. I think we need to look at it as a blend of getting up to the break-even point to catch A, and then we need to decide on whether or not we're going to do an equalization rate, and we're gonna look at what we need to do. So, I don't think it's just a financing decision.
Understood, yeah.
I think it's, it's more complicated than that. And I think, um, the treasurer has been open and transparent on talking about this from the minutes I've looked back over the years, he's brought this up over and over and over again. And, um, I'm glad that we are finally addressing this because we have to. But, so there's two parts to that, we have to decide what we wanna do with financing, what we wanna do with the water meter and the rates, and how we wanna equalize that, and, um, and then do some number crunching, because we have to add in there cost of living, et cetera. So, there are elements that go to that rate decision. So, I agree with you, and we are going to be addressing that, and it does need to be, it does need to be incorporated.
And in addition to that, as we have more buildings with water meters, I lost the word, income's gonna come down, because people lose less water, so we also need to try to calculate for that.
That's right, you're absolutely right, and that's where that formula that we come up with has to, it's not just finance. It's, it's not just, oh, we're missing X amount of dollars today.
Well, 'cause it doesn't, makes no sense.
That's right.
And I think we all agree that if we just fill the hole now, but somebody's still digging it, it doesn't make sense.
Well, that's right, it's quicksand.
Future planning.
Mm-hmm, future planning, that's right, and actual plan. So, I think that is, I think the entire council agrees now.
So, and, and my question is, I guess, long-term, is if we do that, is there potential for rates to go back down once this deficit is filled?
So, to that point, I would hope that actually when we do get everybody appropriately married, that we would do the real-time numbers and then compare it to what we've done, and see what, um, where we really should be, but that's not going to be three months. I mean, that's going to be a year to two years. But we, it's important that we at least have it, and then with the hope that eventually, of course, it's going to go down, because if you've brought your rate up and you've filled the hole, and then you are conservatively watching all across the board on where you're doing your reserves, and you stop borrowing, and you, you stop those habits that have been going on for the past ten, fifteen years, and you use appropriate methodologies and strategies, and you have a real strategic plan going forward for this budget, you should be fine. Thoughts on?
Yeah, so I have, I'll just say, I, I think that the, some of the questions we're raising are beyond the scope of what we can do tonight.
Oh, yeah, this is not, this is just a discussion.
So, so from my, from my perspective tonight, it seems like what we're doing is saying, you know, unless we see something glaring on the expense side, we're basically saying, we accept and appreciate the, the numbers. I don't, I don't think we're even approving them, right, as an enterprise fund?
Right, we're just talking.
I would like a commitment from the council. I'd like to see us make a commitment to come back to this conversation over the next month and address the questions of rate structure and the reserve fund, so that we're being intentional with the rate payers in Newport, and saying, this is, we clearly have, have tried to wrestle with this question, which is where we end up.
And, and that's, I, I agree, we can, when we say commitment, meaning we're going to be putting it forward. But I do have our city attorney on here for this specific discussion, if you don't mind. Um, and I, um.
I'm gonna stop sharing this.
Counselor Smith, I'm sorry?
I'm gonna stop sharing the budget disclaimer.
Yeah, so we can see. I just wanna make sure that the council really understands the, uh, legal side of what, you know, the water sewer area is, and I had asked you, if you wouldn't mind, just go back and look at the charter, et cetera, and the statute, and just kind of give them an update of how that actually works, so they know their authorities and what they can do, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure, let me just pull up what I have in front of me here. The charter by the city council with, the charter at section nine says, "The city council shall establish rates to be paid for the use of the water supplied by the city waterworks, which shall be called service rates and shall be collected by the city treasurer. Such service rates shall be, and are hereby made a lien in nature of a tax upon real estate so supplied with water and shall be collected and enforced under such regulations or as the city council shall prescribe." Now, I'm not aware of the ordinances, uh, that related to the city water, but if there are any. But the city council can set the water rates under their charter, and the, the courts provide a large amount of discretion in setting those rates. The courts only hold, uh, legislative bodies, municipalities, to a reasonable standard. They're going to ask, are these rates reasonable, given the justifications? And that if it's reasonable, the courts will allow it to hold unless, if, as long as they're reasonable and not discriminatory, the courts will allow, uh, they, they give the council a lot of discretion in setting those rates, and how, and based on what justifications they set those rates. Sewer rates have, um, sewer rates have some factors to consider, but again, they are, uh, the courts are very discretionary. They look at, is this reasonable based on, and did they base it on what they're allowed to base the rates on? And here is, uh, just pulling up the. So, it's section three sixteen, "A municipal corporation to its board may establish rates, rents, or charges to be paid as the board may prescribe. The board may establish annual charges separately for bond payment, fixed operation, and maintenance costs in variable operations, maintenance costs dependent on flow." The rates or charges may be based upon, and that goes through seven, uh, different factors that these rates may be based upon. Uh, the first one is the meter consumption of water premises connected with the sewer system. However, the board may determine no user will be billed for fixed operating and maintenance costs and bond payments less than the average single-family charge. Two, the, the rents, rates, and charge may be based upon the number of equivalent, equivalent units connected with or certified the sewage system based on their estimated flows compared to the estimated flows from a single-family dwelling. However, the board may determine no user will be billed less than the minimum charge determined for a single-family dwelling, charged for fixed operation and maintenance costs and bond payment. The rates, rents, charges may be based upon, number three, the strength and flow where the waste's stronger than the household wastes are involved. They may be based upon, number four, the appraised value of the premises, in the event that the commissioner shall determine that sewage disposal plant be of general benefit to the municipality regardless of actual connection with the scene. Number five, it can be based upon the commissioner's determination developed, uh, determination developed using any other equitable basis such as the number and kind of plumbing fixtures, the number of persons residing on or frequent hitting the premises served by those sewers, and the topography, size, type, use, or impervious area of any premises. They, these rates may also be based upon, number six, for groundwater service or stormwater and equivalent residential units based on average area of impervious service on residential property within the municipality. Or, uh, these rates may be based on any combination of these bases, provided the combination is equitable. So, the rates have to be reasonable, they have to be equitable among the users. Now, equitable doesn't mean equal, it means taking into account, hey, this person uses a lot where this property poses to use a lot. These types of properties tend to use more, we can charge them more. As long as it's rational, reasonable, doesn't discriminate, and is equitable, the courts are gonna give counsel a lot of leeway on coming up with the best way to set rates.
Thank you, do you have any questions or thoughts here? That was a lot, did you memorize that?
Every single word.
Okay, good. No, it was actually so helpful, I appreciate this, but, but I want the council to have this opportunity to, to understand and answer these questions.
Absolutely.
I don't know what to say, these numbers have been kind of what I've been staring at for the majority of my waking hours this week. 'Cause that's, that's fun. So, just imagining, and again, I don't know the order of financing, rate structures, predicting what's out there. I, I think we, we can do this in a manageable way, that it's gonna be a hard hit. Uh, I think we need to do it now, instead of pushing it down, pushing it down, so that's all I got to say at this point.
Right, but, but it's something that we need to, to do. And it is what it is, because, you know, as I said, I went back all the way to twenty-eleven, and it just kicked down the road forever. And so, now it's time, it's, it's on our plate, and we have to fix it so that. and we have to fix it so that the city moves forward appropriately and then we can keep going back and monitoring it. We have good department heads and they'll help and we'll get it together. Council member?
Income expenses, some money set aside for water meters. I'm open to all options, including um taking out a loan to make us even. We'll have to have, we keep saying, or Rick keeps saying, we need a conversation, I agree with, we need one twenty seventh.
That's exactly where I was going to put it, on the twenty seventh. Um we're going to be putting that, we're going to be putting warnings and we're going to be putting the commit, uh on committing the funds on that. Do, are you good with that? Do you have any questions for our city attorney?
No, it's actually really hard, uh helpful to review the charter requirements, so thank you, Bria.
So before you, are you good?
I've got one question.
Wait, um the treasurer has a question for you, Bria.
Certainly.
Uh Bria, if this comes down to financing, uh is the water commission have the authority to take that loan out for that for the enterprise fund or is that to go to a vote in the city?
That question, I would like to look at that particular question.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's a, it's a good question.
I wanna make sure that I'm right on that and I I like, uh so I I think I want, I wanna go look at that question. Whether, so the question is whether the council can take out the financing or whether the uh whether it needs to go to a citywide vote, like at the annual meeting.
Yeah.
I I could look into that. The charter though, the charter does say, does identify the uh council. That's the rates. Yeah, I will, I will have to get back to you on that, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, and if you don't mind, if I know you've asked.
It's a important question that I wanna get right and I don't wanna mislead anybody tonight, so.
And I know you have a lot on your plate, but if you could keep in mind that we're going to be looking at this on the twenty seventh, if we can have you focused for that, thank you for that. Good question, yes, and now President Bishan.
I have, I have kind of a, I guess, an inquiry. Is there relatable data that we can pull from other municipalities that have transitioned from non-meters to meters so we can track some trends of how much that in revenues increased, decreased and flowed?
Actually, I have a bunch of reports.
Okay.
I have like Burlington's reports, I, we met with, you know, we have reports.
Brother, smaller, did you misspoke, it was Burlington?
So there, yeah, I I I don't know if it was brought up or not, but I have a bunch of um, a bunch of reports that I went through and looked at and I will be more than happy to pull those and get you those so you can have access to those as well.
Have more, luck is there.
Oh, it's in my bag, in my car, I become like the mayor bag lady. Um and so I will definitely, and that's something you should look at, that you're going to see, it's all over the place. But you should still see, the issues that they have are the same issues that we're having and it's just a matter of making the decisions and moving forward and finding what's good for your city, you know, but yes.
I'm good.
You're good? So, Mr. Bishan?
I have some things about the budget that I have, something specific, um I've raised it before about whether or not a loan is appropriate under these circumstances or whether or not if a loan had to be paid by Water and Sewage, then a loan should have to be taken out by the city to pay Water and Sewage back for the pillaging that was done since two thousand and ten when um John Moore had first suggested that sixty percent of his salary be moved and paid for by Water and Sewage for the mere fact that he wanted more money available, the equivalent of sixty percent, to pay for streets in the city uh general fund. And that was just for that year, but the process continued to to today. And that means that, uh and you reduced it to ten percent, but but sort of reasonably, but that's fifty percent of initially um the city manager and then forty-five percent of Rebecca Ferian's um salary. Um I would say, just estimating, just giving you a good favor of it, let's say seventy thousand, eighty thousand dollars a year was paid by Water and Sewage that should not have been paid for the salaries of those two people times fourteen years, a million dollars. So the city of Newport, seventy thousand times fourteen years is close to what I suggested, ninety eight, nine, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. As far as I'm concerned, to be fair, the city of Newport owes the Water and Sewer budget, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, and you can figure out how much you think it happened the other way, but I'll bet you, I'll bet you the city owes Water and Sewage more than Water and Sewage owes. And I would be, I'm I'm willing right now to sort of call it quits. You don't pay us Water and Sewage back all the money you owe. We don't pay that extra money that you depleted. But don't, don't screw Water and Sewage twice, you already screwed us once and now you want us to take out a loan to pay pay you back when you, when you screwed us to begin with out of all of that money. Uh not you particularly, it happened in the past, it should never have happened in the past. We asked it to stop, um we asked people to vote on the Water and Sewer budget so they'd see it finally. It really upsets me when when people say that that's what you'd have. Going forward, yes, let's look at this budget and figure out where the five hundred thousand dollars is right now that currently we could be saved. Should you be putting money into um a sinking fund for vectors or a sinking fund for um water, for a water tower at a time when you don't have enough money uh to to meet your regular needs? The answer is no, there's a hundred thousand dollars or so right there, shouldn't be going into sinking funds. I don't, when I can't pay my debts, say to my debtors, hey, I need a Cadillac next year and I'm gonna put thirty thousand dollars of the money that I'm bringing in, my little bit of money, into my Cadillac fund um when I can't pay my bills. They'd say, what are you talking about? You pay your bills first, you don't put it into a fund for eventually. That isn't, that isn't good sense. So there are places and I, I mean, I got overwhelmed by this theory of the loan, uh but I I have other places where you might save some money. But certainly, I mean, the interest incomes, I'd like to know if you're getting the full interest on um the incomes that you're bringing in. Um I'd, I'd certainly like uh you not to bulk up um how many uh water meters you're gonna be putting in when, there have been years that you've asked to pu- uh for money for a um, I don't know, buying four or five hundred meters and then you put in three.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump in here.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm, I'm curious about the loan.
Because first, well, the bottom line is that this is a matter of a decision that has to be made going forward. We can't speak to the intent of prior councils or what their choices were, but we can fix the situation that we've been handed. And so I can read the minutes and see where, what you're seeing and what's happened and we can watch the prior council meetings, which we, which I've done etcetera. That's right, that's what I meant. What I'm saying is, um and the tapes etcetera that are had, but the issue right now is today, what are we going to do about it and what are the resources that we need to address? And so I'm gonna wipe out all of the political discussion here for this council right now for them to understand that we have to deal with this situation and that's what we're doing. We're going to talk about it on the twenty seventh and figure out what we need to do, the appropriate rate structures, whether it be financing, the mix and the blend etcetera. But I just want you to know that this one owes this one or this one owes this one or this one owes, this one is going to have weight on the decision factor but not on what we need to actually, it it will influence the decision, but it won't be the intent of the prior council, uh you know, because we can't do that, they got us here, is what I'm saying, so, so continue.
I I was interested in learning why the sludge de-water disposal jumped from about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty-two, twenty-three up to two hundred thousand dollars under sewer.
It's a wastewater plant.
Right.
You know, we have a million gallon tank that has to be decanted off and and pressed in landfill. We press daily and those numbers are what they are. You know, it it might have escalated in cost because we were trying to keep a truck, if you remember, a year and a half ago. Uh trucks are two hundred thousand dollars, um I'm still waiting on a truck that's a year and a half out and the truck that we had in the wastewater plant was needed to 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 leave, needed to go. So now we're haul, we're having Casella haul that, they bring a bin in. Uh and they're hauling it twice a week, we were hauling every day with the truck.
And that was approved by the council?
So there was, and I did say there was gonna be an added cost. No idea what that cost was gonna be, but we were probably spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just on on the sludge that that, you know, Casella.
Yeah, and that, and that was approved by the council, this was addressed a lot out of here a couple of years ago, remember that? We went through the contracts and you actually, the scales and everything.
If if people wanna think back or look back, uh when we, before we got our press, we used to hire Senna-Sack twice a year to come in and it was a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand every time they came here with their press to press out our sludge. So in theory, we are still saving money. Uh but everything comes at a cost.
Thank you.
How many meters do you?
Wait, one second, sorry.
Six.
Somebody with a question. No, I just, you both like, yeah.
In addition to that, there's the the repairs, the maintenance on that truck that we don't have to do anymore, so that's another cost as well, so.
Oh, correct.
That line item again, line items go go up, but the costs are split amongst other things, some reduce, some increase. So it's it's good to look at the whole thing as a picture, questions are fantastic, um but looking at the whole pictures too.
And keep keep in mind too, that truck was a handiwork from Public Works. By the time it went to the wastewater plant, it, you know, it took a lot to keep that truck from growing.
With, did you?
Oh, it's, we also got a memo last week about a what, seven percent increase at Casella?
Right.
So that's probably taken into account.
Yeah, the costs are, everybody's raising their prices and their costs.
No.
Um Pam raised the uh water meter issue and that, how many, how many water meters do you really intend to put in this year is the question? Because we shouldn't be um putting in for um meters that we're not going to um be using since Thomas said, we don't wanna store them up here. I mean, be afraid if we had like a building of water meters, but for all the water meters, we've we've bought water meters every ye- year in the budget that we've never had, we never bought.
And so I think that in all fairness, I'm not gonna let Mr. Bernie address this, but we've also identified some extraordinary circumstances where the, they go out and there's like plumbing issues or certain houses, so you know, you can't turn around and say, we are gonna put in thousands of water meters today and it's gonna be done by five o'clock. So there's circumstances that come back, but I'm going to ask Mr. Bernie to address.
Sure. So uh last year we had budgeted, uh we're, I don't know, just just looking at it, uh thirty-eight thousand. Uh actually, that's doubled, so two different locations, thirty-eight thousand, I reduced it down to twenty-five. We actually spent fifteen, fifteen thousand, six hundred, so thirty, over thirty-one thousand dollars of what we spent on meters last year for four guys with parts that, and I don't know what the number that we installed, uh but you gotta keep in mind too, they also oversee our our wastewater plant, twelve pump stations, uh booster pump station, the reservoir, the water tower, it's not their only job. Yeah, I'd love to put more meters in and I'm, and we're looking for ways, just there's monies out there to try to get all these meters in and that'd be the way. I'd like to see it done, this is, this is a task. And as as Mary did say, there are places you go to that, you know, we're not certified plumbers, but we are allowed to put them in. You go to some places and the the, you know, you need a plumber to do it, just, you know.
And those are decisions that have to be made as well because the, you know, people, some people say, well, you know, just because my plumbing is outdated or doesn't adjust, we want the city to pay for it. And so there, there's a lot of issues legally that we have to look at on some as well. So it's not as easy as like, hi, I'm the meter man. And I learned that from listening and watching this. I understand what you, what you're saying.
But maybe next year we should, or maybe this, when you think about it, you should put this money in a sinking fund so that we don't have to keep putting more money in and having it disappear in other costs. The other two, the other two things.
And and to that point, and to that point, that's exactly what we're talking about is identifying the appropriate sinking funds, having the council make those decisions so that the treasurer knows what sinking funds are there, not just letting it be haphazard. And then, of course, the treasurer won't do a sinking fund because he hasn't been told, put together a sinking fund.
I I understand that. I I think this year, putting money in a vector sinking fund of seventy thousand dollars and into the, I think that's the water treatment fund, sinking fund of thirty thousand dollars, when we've just established that we're gonna be five hundred thousand dollars uh behind the eight ball, as my father used to say, um is silly and that we shouldn't be putting that money into um a sinking fund this year, but we should be paying our bills with that money. And we should uh take a loan at the appropriate time when we're ready to buy the um object that we might be needing um and and put it out over a period of years, if that's the only way we can do it. But we shouldn't be putting money in sinking funds when we don't have the money to pay the bills.
And that's gonna be some of the, those are the decisions and that's gonna be some number crunching and look at the financing.
But that's in the budget for this year.
No, no, I'm just saying, you're, the decision of of what we should and shouldn't do, but I want Mr. Bernie.
But you're gonna vote on the budget tonight.
Not the water and sewage.
Okay.
We're talking, okay, okay.
I I don't know the exact wording, but I know when we built the arsenic treatment plant, the state of Vermont, uh I don't know if they suggested or pretty much told us we should have a sinking fund for that water treatment facility. It was five million when we put it in back in two thousand and seven maybe. So, yeah, we have two hundred and thirteen thousand in there, it was just a couple of years ago, we put about sixty thousand into the control panel that controls all, everything in that with that facility. So we didn't, again, we didn't have to borrow the money, the money was there for those big items and usually at those facilities, you're not talking a small cheap item, usually they're pretty expensive. As far as the back truck, um yeah, they can take it out, that that's fine and I I wouldn't disagree with you. But currently we have a two thousand and twelve back truck and that thing is a lifesaver for the public works department or the city of Newport in general. We use that truck in summertime every day and and it's, and it's a huge safety factor for us because we we use it for excavation, we go out and find buried power lines and whatnot. So yeah, a- again, we can take it out, I'm not not arguing that fact. But the way I've always looked at it with Public Works, with the amount of equipment we have, I always, I don't. I always, I don't least purchase a piece of equipment. It might take me five years to get there, but we, we're not paying on loans. We, I put the money aside, and when we get the money, we purchase it. That truck still has value, a couple of years from now it probably won't. But again, that's, that's council's decision.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so.
Did you just identify what you were?
Yeah, all nice, front and circle, so. I noticed on the income, tipping fees aren't broken out because, aren't, don't you guys have like juddies and other people drop off to you? Where, where, where are those fees in the budget, that, what they're getting charged?
You want my honest answer? I'm not really sure.
Okay, I appreciate honesty.
No, I, I, again, I don't, I'm not the finance guy, and then there's a lot of, there's been a lot of questions that we're, we're looking at. I'm not, you know, I run the facilities, but I don't yield the cash.
Because that's something that should be broke, I mean, we should see what our citizens are contributing to water and sewer, and we should see what, I mean, these private haulers that are dumping stuff, I mean, we need to make sure that they're getting charged appropriately. The other thing, I have a question on the water meters, it's a little near and dear to my heart. The, what, how many connections do we have, and what percentage of those connections have meters at this point?
We have 1,895 connections. I believe it's either seven or 800 that we have left to do, but I'd have to get that number. So, we're, we're over, we're a little over a half, I believe.
Yeah, I, I know, I think that's what Jason had sent us, those numbers.
I can get you that number though.
I was just curious, I mean, about a third, between a third and a half.
Yeah.
So, that's all I got, right, on this budget.
I've got a question, is there a way that the council minutes could include what Bria said, those seven points he covered? I sort of feel like Chris, you sort of in one ear and out the other. But I think it was an interesting point of the, you know, equitability of the rates. I have one other, two, oh, well, really, sort of, I guess, two. One is, I couldn't find or did not see where the arsenic plant was budgeted for the current year. And then the water tower, is, do we not have a land purchase on that that potentially should be included? And it just seemed like the fuel costs overall in the sewer treatment plant were down a lot. I know they've done a lot of cost-saving stuff, but some of them just seem like they, they might be a little out of whack from the historic.
About the arsenic plant? I don't have that answer.
No, I didn't know if Tom had discussed that. Did you talk about the arsenic plant? About the arsenic plant?
It was a line item, it was the arsenic plant and, where is it? And water treatment, that and, it was, it was building for one year only.
Yeah, I have to do a detail and see what that actually was.
Yeah, it was, it was a little weird.
Yeah. Something had it pressed there, whatever reason, on 23, 24.
Yeah. So, it seems strange.
So, we can look into that. And then we'll, we'll figure that one out before the 27th. Yes. I'm sorry, I, I, were you done?
Yeah, it just, the, you know, the missing loans.
Yeah, we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna look at those issues before the 27th when you bring this back.
So, I'll just make my point tonight, and again, on the 27th. I've said for half a year, a year, that we're in a situation where we can't wait, and if we piecemeal these meters, it's gonna take way too long. And it's my opinion that the, the council needs to be aggressive in getting this done because, as Ms. Hopkins said, we're talking about equitability here. And the fact is that until we get every hookup in the city on a meter, that's the only way we're gonna be able to start at a, at a, at a level playing field for everyone. And if my household has two people in it, and somebody else's household has six people in it, that's the equitability, that's what Brian was talking about, in my opinion. It's the amount of water that you use, and until we know what that is, and on the other side of that, what we've lost in, in water that's not being accounted for, that's the only way we can do it. And we just can't sit here for the next two, three, four years, and with 800 meters to go, and put in, you know, a few here and a few there, and, you know, 60 this year and 100 next year, we absolutely cannot do it, or it won't happen.
And so to that, I think what was addressed is that we're going to come up with an equitable rate during, while that happens, and then once it gets in. So, we, we can't just say, we're going to sit here and be aggressive putting them in and not do anything on the equitable rate. And so that has to happen first because it's going to take time to get those meters in. And that's exactly what we're going to start our discussion on, on the 27th. That's a tough priority. So, and maybe I wasn't clear, and I just want everybody to understand. It's the equalization of the rate, the proper funding and financing to get us there, get the meters in, and then we will balance what actually happens and compare it, and then come back to president's question, will maybe it'll go lower, et cetera, et cetera. And so, but we have to equalize that rate.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, thank you. Yes, sir.
So, just one thing on, on trying to get all the meters in. I appreciate the, the sentiment there that they need to get in, but coming from a background of doing meter swapouts for large cities, his hands are tied with the amount of employees he's got. I mean, they've got a lot of other stuff to do, and it's not, it's not an easy task. So, whether it's a contractor putting it out to bid or something like that, if you really want the meters installed, and you want them installed yesterday, he doesn't have the manpower to do it.
And to your point, that's all part of this discussion. Because, and so, that's why I said, it's not going to be, okay, we're putting even meters in by rightsake.
Right.
Because that's just a pipe dream. And, and so it's a matter of what's the method, as Mr. Bernie said, plumbers, et cetera, the different experiences that they find when they go in, and running the city, doing all of the other work that they need to do with the employees that they have. That's why I said, we need to set an equalizing rate, and then we need to figure out, is it a consultant who comes in X amount, what, what does he need to get it done? And so that's the serious discussion to be realistic.
Right, because.
And, and it's pure business management, and we need to do that. And that's where we're going, so we are in agreement. And we all are in agreement there, and, and the council's in agreement now. And so, that's a priority that's going to happen.
Madam Mayor, there's one hand up online.
Help, we.
Ms. Bearely.
Ms. Bearely?
Yes, I, I was asking my question before, and perhaps you didn't answer it, Madam Mayor, because it was pertaining to the general budget at that time, but it was a water sewer question. So, on the, the water tower sinking fund and the vector truck sinking fund, are those currently being kept in actual, like, separate accounts and dedicated accounts? That's my question.
Yes, and so, yes, they are, there are separate accounts. I just wanted to be real clear, Ms. Bearely, that going forward, it's not, things are not gonna be called sinking funds, and then they really don't happen, that we are going to take a look at every single sinking fund and then uncommit what's, should be uncommitted, or make sure that the treasurer knows which sinking funds going forward have been approved by the council. But yes, the treasurer can actually confirm that those are sinking funds. Yeah, and he has, I don't know if you heard him, because it's kind of difficult when you're online.
Okay, 'cause so, so the ones for water and sewer are not like these commitments that are being rolled around with the rest of the general funds in water and sewer? Is that correct?
No, they're in their own accounts, yeah. Each one has their own account, they're held separately at the bank.
Okay, so if we put aside $70,000 this year for the backdoor truck, it's gonna be in the bank somewhere, correct? And it's not getting used for general water and sewer expenses?
No, that'll be in the bank by the end of the year, by June 30.
So, I, let me just make sure, I think your question is that you're asking if there's kind of a co-mingling in all those funds, no?
No, there's not.
That, that is my question, because water and sewer is specific. And so I wanted to make sure that they weren't in the general fund, because your statement before made it sound like they might be, and that would, that would be a concern.
No, so.
For water and sewers.
No, the water and sewer are not co-mingled.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so does anybody wanna do anything, or we're just gonna move on to the next new business?
I'd say it's on the new, the next agenda, and then we'll move on.
Okay. Okay, so, we, and just that we've all in agreement, we're moving this on to the next, on the 27th. Okay. So, the next item is new business. President Sean?
I guess new or, but this is the fourth budget process I've gone through with the city, and it's, again, it amazes me how much dedication and work department heads and our staff put into this. And again, I thank you, it's not easy. Costs go up, materials go up, and you still manage to make awesome things happen in the city, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Curtis?
Hello.
Councilmember Alfred Chase?
Yeah, the president speaks my mind.
Treasurer? Well, I'd like to thank everybody as well for all this work, you know, because I know it was coming on a Monday, coming on Tuesday, sitting here during lunch, and they worked lunch hours. They had some pizza, but they did come in and they worked. Whenever I asked them to come in, like, they were there, and they adjusted their schedules and came in, so I appreciated that. Next item on the agenda is all business. President Frishan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Alfred Chase?
Thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
Thank you.
Here it is. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn the special council meeting at 8:23 PM? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you, everybody.